Think you could find a more interesting subject matter.
In case you're wondering, we're waiting on Councilmember Butler. I'm not really sure if Dr. Weir is at this point in time, so we'll give him a few minutes, then we'll get started. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening. I want to call the Burlington City Council, August 20th, 2013, meeting to order. I want to take this opportunity to welcome each one of you here tonight, and also hopefully you will return. Before we turn it over for tonight's invocation, I'd like to address, on August 15th, which was Thursday, Councilmember Fawcett lost his mother, and the funeral was held yesterday, and what a beautiful ceremony it was. And our prayers and thoughts go with CeeLo and his family. And also several weeks ago, our city manager, Mr. Owen, had an event, and obviously we've made some nice recovery, and our prayers and thoughts go with Mr. Owen and his family.
Is that what they call that?
Events I'm no used to. That wasn't kind of an event I can tell you.
I'm trying to avoid the HIPAA laws, okay? So our prayers and thoughts go with both family members, but this time we'd ask Councilmember Fawcett for tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow our heads for a moment, please. Silent prayer.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. At this time, we recognize Brittany Perez and Phazer Blackwell. If they would come forward. Proclamation proclaiming Saturday, September 7th, 2013, as Pinnacle Family Fun Day at North Park in the city of Burlington. Whereas Pinnacle Ministry presents Pinnacle Family Fun Night at North Park, and whereas the event is designed to provide good, clean, and wholesome fun for families, and whereas the event promotes education, provides resources in the areas of health, wellness, and nutrition, and whereas the event is designed to strengthen relationships that foster responsibilities and unity concerning the needs of our city's young, elderly, and disadvantaged, and whereas the activities of the day will include Shank's La Sora Health Fair, a super flea market, Roy Blackwell's Farmers Market, Ed Miles's Car Show, Sidney Smith Amazing Race, David Maynard Basketball Tournament, Herbert Bush Softball Tournament, children's activities, choir and arts performers, games, and Mako Bigelow Grill Off, and best desserts competition. Now therefore, Ronnie K. Wall, Mayor of the city of Burlington, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 7th, 2013, Pinnacle Family Fun Day at North Park in the city of Burlington.
Thank you, sir. Feel free to say a few words if you'd like, especially about the desserts.
Well, of course, because I know we all like to eat, okay? But again, we thank you all. Thank you, Mayor Wall, Councilmen, Councilmen's. We thank you again for assisting us on this second Family Fun Day. We were expecting a good turnout this year, about 5,000 people. But one of the things that we've been most excited about this year is the amount of just support that we've gotten from local businesses. Our local businesses have turned out real well with us, as far as sponsoring us, and as far as just assisting us with whatever we may need. But again, it's going to be a day of food, fellowship, and fun. So again, if those three things sound interesting to you all, I invite each and every one of you to come out and partake of the good food, the good fellowship, and of course, the fun that will be there on that day. Again, we say thank you.
Thank you.
Need any judges for that grill off?
Get in contact with her.
Ms. Mailer, let me say something here. This is the second year that we've had this at North Park, and that's just part of the improvement that Parks and Recs is helping with, providing clean activities for the family in the North Park area. And I'm really proud of these guys for doing this and to be a part of it. We needed something like this in North Park, and we began to get it now. So North Park is coming back to life along with the things that these young people are doing in North Park. So thank you again.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is presentations to council, Burlington Fire Department retirees, a donation to the honor guard. At this time, we recognize Mr. Ed Carroll, retired Burlington Fire Department. Welcome, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is Ed Carroll. I'm a retired firefighter from the Burlington Fire Department. I'm here tonight as a member of a group of retired firefighters that meets once a week to keep track, to keep track of each other on health issues and discuss what's happening in the fire service. As a result of a guest speaker that we had, we learned that the fire department honor guard uniforms were in need of replacing. We decided to have a fundraiser to help with this problem. We hosted a golf tournament as a result, and tonight, we would like to present Jay Smith and the honor guard members here with a check for $5,200. May I mention at this time, the honor guard, when I was in the fire department, I was head of the honor guard, and they attend flag ceremonies. They attend funerals of firefighters and other dignitaries. They do this work on their own, usually on their own time. And after talking with them, I thought this was something that really needed to be done, and we're proud to have taken part in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Mayor Wall, we appreciate the retirees doing. They've been very supportive of the fire department and things we've done. Years ago, they raised $30,000 for the fire safety trailer we had. That was through their efforts. And so they've been very supportive of us, and this is something they wanted to do. I have Captain Anthony Davis and engineer Adam Dixon here. They're part of our honor guard. They're on duty tonight, so I asked them to come over. And I think we have several of our retired firemen here tonight. Chief Bell, Chief Holt, and Chief Rutledge. They're here tonight, too. So they were all part of that.
Next presentation will be Grandmaster Lee, Lee Brothers Academy, the Burlington Police Explorers. At this time, we recognize Grandmaster Lee.
Cadets, attention! Show your respect. Bow.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Grandmaster Hungo Lee. I am the owner of Lee Brothers, and I brought a team of police explore groups here today. They are here to give you a small presentation. They've been working with me for the past about two, three months now, and they have prepared a small self-defense exhibition for you. I hope you enjoy them.
Cadets, are you ready to demonstrate your self-defenses?
Yes, sir!
Please face each other. Spread out, please. Three. Bow. Fighting scenes. Line one, attack! Line two, attack! Line one, attack! Line two, attack! Okay, line one, attack! Line two, attack! Line two, turn around. Line one, attack! Line one, turn around. Line two, attack! Line one, attack! Line two, attack! Okay, up, please. Attention! Show your respect. Bow. Cadets, get in line for your board breaking practice. Are you all ready to break these boards?
Yes, sir!
Fighting scenes! Go! 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 Cadets, line up! Show your respect. Please turn around, face me. Right wrist.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a team captain of our explore post. We're going to invite her up here, and she can explain to you what they learned at the police explore post, okay? Cadet Bryson, can you step forward?
Good evening. My name is Bryson Irwin, captain of the Burlington Police Explorers. I would like to say a few things on behalf of our explore post. First, we thank you for this time, your time this evening. The explore post is a nonprofited, community-based organization. We have rules and regulations, we have rules, regulations, and learning experiences similar to a police officer. We learn such by participating in ride-alongs and various classes during our meetings. At our scheduled meetings, we learn about policing and other tools such as interrogation, crime scene analysis, and our basic ten codes, phonetic alphabet, and basic law enforcement training. Our fundraisers include car washes, car shows, yard sales, and more. The fundraisers help support our annual blood drive and yard sale and yearly costs to fund the program such as insurance. We also try to include fun activities. We are trying to work towards in attending the National Police Explore Competition, which is held by yearly. On behalf of all the explorers, I would like to thank, excuse me, I would like to thank the Burlington Police Department and the Exploring for Life Division of the Boy Scouts of America for your support. Thanks, thank you to the Burlington Police Warrant Personnel for helping with various classes and attending our fundraisers. Thank you to our main advisor, Detective Jennifer Mathely, and the assistants of Mark Mathely, and volunteer advisor Sam Medley and John Stanford Senior, along with former explorers Edward Valdez and Wade Humphrey. Last but not least, we would also like to thank Grandmaster Lee for donating his time and knowledge to teach us about Taekwondo at Lee Brothers. Hope you enjoyed your presentation. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you all again.
Cadets, attention! Bow. We are done, sir. Thank you for watching. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Grandmaster Lee. We appreciate you guys being here tonight. Job well done.
All right. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cadets, please help me with this.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you noticed, Chief Smith and his defenses hose doing his whole exercise.
He was sitting in one seat and leaning over into the other one. Occupied about two-thirds of the front row.
I'm a little scared of him getting hit at the house.
Also, at this time, we'd all like to recognize Alex Dotson. Alex is representing Troop 142 from Shallow Methodist. If Alex would, stand. And he is here tonight to... Good. Welcome out. Hopefully you'll enjoy it, and hopefully we can put on a good show for you. And your mom is with you?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce her?
This is my mom, Tammy Dotson.
Thank you both for being here tonight.
Thank you.
This time, we recognize City Clerk Renee Ward for the Code of Ethics.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid complex interests in matters that are before us. At this time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
None. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes. July 15th, 2013, City Council Work Session. July 16th, 2013, City Council Meeting. August 6th, 2013, City Council Special Meeting.
I move we approve the July 15th City Council Work Session, July 16th, City Council Meeting, and August 6th, City Council Special Meeting.
Got a motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Adoption of the agenda. Got a motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Consider the agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1A, to adopt an ordinance approving the following traffic commission recommendations to change the existing two-hour parking to all-day parking along Maple Avenue southeast from Church Street to Melvin Alley; to change the existing two-hour parking lot to all-day parking lot, Morehead Street southeast from Church Street to Melvin Alley; to approve a handicap parking space on the north side of Spring Street at the north corner of Spring Street and Maple Avenue; to replace the existing yield sign on Lindsay Street, eastbound approach to Trade Street with a stop sign; B, to award a bid to U.S. Bank Corp. for a lease slash purchase funding agreement at a loan interest rate of .858% for all major equipment purchases, and to be conditional upon all financing documents proposed by U.S. Bank Corp., meaning approval of the city attorney; C, to approve a carnival permit for Powers Great American Midways to operate October 8th through 13, 2013, from 5:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m., weekdays from 1:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. The carnival will be held in the former Western Electric Parking Lot located at northeast corner of North Church Street and Grim Hoop Dell Road. All requirements have been met. D, to adopt a resolution authorizing amendment for the lease of city-owned surplus real property to New Singular Wireless PCS on property located at 3715 Rule Retriect Road, Joe C. Davidson Park, according to provisions of North Carolina General Statute 168-272E, to approve a file plan of woods at Grove Park Townhomes Phase 11. Property is located north of South Meven Street and to south of Trail 6, as shown on plans by Simmons Engineering Incorporated dated June 28, 2013, containing nine lots. F, to approve a combat, combat, a, of easement to NCDO2 in the amount of $2,872 for electrical utility relocation pursuant to North Line General Statute 160A-274G, to award a contract to CNJ Utilities Incorporated in the amount of $536,397.54 to provide sanitary sewer service to approximately 157 acres of potential industrial property, including the chief's food, manufacturing, and distribution center. The city will be reimbursed up to the maximum grant amount once the utilities are completed. To approve budget amendment 2014-5 Golden Week Grant for water and sewer lines along White's Hill Road, and that's spelled out in your agenda. H, to avoid a contract, a soup and corporation, the amount of $499,253.81 to purchase a fire truck utilizing competitive group program, exception statute, North Carolina General Statute 143-129E3, to approve a budget amendment 2014-6, fire truck, the amount of $620,000. That is spelled out in your agenda. I, budget amendment 2014-3-ASA, senior softball tournament, is spelled out in your agenda. J, budget amendment 2014-4, CDVG repair program, is spelled out in your agenda. K, budget amendment 2014-7, general fund 2013-14, budget financed equipment, is spelled out in your agenda. A, budget amendment 20-14-8, reco appropriations, is spelled out in your agenda. M, budget amendment 20- or excuse me, 2014-9, police donation, is spelled out in your agenda.
We approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? New business. City Council will consider approving an agreement with Brightwood Farms Incorporated in the city of Burlington to provide water and sewer service to serve Brightwood Farms Phases 5B and 5C. At this time, we recognize Lanny Rude. Welcome, Mr. Rude.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At the July 15th City Council Work Session, you heard of the request to, staff had receipt, receipt to serve Brightwood Farms Phase 5B and 5C with water and sewer service. These phases are within the original 512-acre Brightwood Farms development that received development approval from Guilford County. In 2002, Greensboro and Burlington reached agreements that determined boundaries of annexation and utility services in eastern Guilford County. Per this agreement, Brightwood Farms is within Burlington service area. These phases consist of approximately 27 acres and have potential for up to 150 home sites. Any previous agreement to serve undeveloped portions of Brightwood Farms has expired. Brightwood Farms, Inc. has retained approximately 175 acres of undeveloped property in this development and are making this request. The owners have submitted an annexation agreement and petition for annexation, but the city currently cannot annex in this area because the site would be considered satellite annexation and is closer to the town of Witsit than to the city limits of Burlington. Upon build-out, the site would generate approximately 207,000 in development fees and 12,000 to 15,000 per month in usage fees. The recommended approach, as discussed at the city work session, was to enter to an agreement with the owner of the property for water and sewer service, similar to the one held previously in Brightwood Farms. After staff has reviewed this agreement, the agreement comes before you tonight for consideration of your approval.
Questions or comments to Mr. Rude?
Well, we note for, I guess we'd note for the record that they have complied with our ordinance pertaining to the extension of water or sewer services, and that is a petition to come into our city. As a practical matter, it's a, based upon a state statute, that's a legal impossibility for us to be able to act upon that and annex, but they have complied, and I would want the record to reflect that they have complied with our ordinance in so petitioning.
Any other comments?
Is that a motion, subject to, just putting that in the record? Yes. I'll second that.
Got a motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, Mr. Rude. Next, item three. The city council will consider request to allow wine to be served at May Memorial Library's 75th Anniversary Reception Saturday, September 28, 2013, to begin after-hours operation. It will be by invitation only. At this time, we recognize Director of Alamance Public Libraries, Ms. MJ Workerson. Welcome.
Good morning, or good afternoon, evening, mayor and council members. As you stated, May Memorial is celebrating their 75th anniversary, and as part of those celebrations, we want to have an after-hours reception where we recognize previous employees that worked in May Memorial, previous library board members, and previous friends board members. And we would like to serve, have catering and serve wine at that reception. It is by invitation only. We anticipate about 150 people attending, all adults, and it would start after we close the library at six, at 6:00.
Questions from Ms. Workerson?
All the requirements have been met as far as insurance and everything.
We're still waiting on that, so I would ask that if you approve subject to receiving the insurance, proper insurance documentation.
You're aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Move we approve the request subject to meeting the requirements regarding insurance.
Got a motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number four. City Council will consider moratorium on the No Cruising Ordinance, Section 36-72, for an event to be held on August 24, 2013, beginning at 6:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. on North Main Street, Polk Street, to Webb Avenue, and a rain date on September 7, 2013. At this time, we recognize Tanya Hudson. Welcome, Ms. Hudson.
Hey, thank you. Well, you just said about half of what I was going to say there. So we are requesting for that one night for the no city cruising ordinance to be lifted. August 24, 6:00 p.m., 12:00 p.m., September, the rain date, 6:00 p.m. and 12:00 a.m. This year is going to be our fourth year for having this event. Last year, the, last year, the city did profit from this event, as well as many vendors that we had on Main Street. This year, we're going to have the coolest planet on earth, along with a few others, including Dicky Do's, and we do have a DJ this year. And we had...
Start, excuse me. What was the first part of that?
The coolest planet on earth. They are a snow cone. Last year, we had Snowball Effects, but unfortunately, she went out of business. So, so the coolest planet on earth, we're going to have Dicky Do's barbecue up there. We have a DJ, and I have a few other vendors that's come in, such as last year. And we want to thank... And we want to thank the Burlington Police Department because they always do so great, and they help us provide us, they help us to make this event possible every year. And we also want to thank all the members of the city council for voting yes for the last three years and hopefully voting yes again this year.
Any problems from last year?
I heard last, yeah, last week, there were some problems apparently with the trash on the secondary roads near the train tracks, which I went up and cleaned up there last year and all the years prior, so it wasn't a problem. I've got a little cleaning crew with me this year, though, so we can hit the whole entire route. And apparently, there was some problems with some urination there, too, on the secondary backroads.
Much said.
Sorry about that.
Hope that doesn't reflect the record. Any questions?
I hope it doesn't either.
Council members?
Is there going to throw it at me?
The crowd's getting old.
Any comments from the police department?
We met with Ms. Hudson a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
To voice some concerns that we've had from past events, and she is working with us to help mitigate those issues. We are going to post some folks at the train tracks, Mr. Fawcett, and we're also going to alert Southern Railway and Amtrak to let them know that the event is occurring, and also so that we can nail down some times on when to expect the trains for safety.
Any questions for? Any other questions for Ms. Hudson?
We approve the moratorium on the No Cruising Ordinance for August 24th, 2013, 6:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m., and the rain date for September 7th, from 6:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m.
Second.
Got a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Item number five on the agenda. City council will consider temporarily closing Davis Street between Spring Street and Lexington Avenue on September 28th, 2013, from 12:00 noon until 12:00 midnight for the Rusty Buckets Downtown Fundraising Event, and a rain date on October 5th, 2013. At this time, we recognize Angie Ball. Welcome, Ms. Ball.
Thank you, mayor. Hope all city councilmen are doing well. Yes, we are still want to do this event because the main time is for Sertoma. It's not just for the Rusty Bucket, even though it is not here as of right now. We are still requesting time from 12 to 12, and that way, we can set up and make sure all the streets are clean. That's why we need that extra time. The event will be from 4 to 9 o'clock. Shorten it just a little bit than the few other past years. We also will have barbecue this year. It'll be coming from Danny's Cafe. We will have craft vendors, food vendors, live music, all kinds of good stuff, and Zach's Hot Dog Eating Contest, again. This year, we're going to move it as well. We're going to ask if we could block Davis Street, and that is from Spring Street to Lexington Street this year. Roads are wider, and it's better than having that T-section kind of thing like we always do. That way, we can kind of keep it eyeballed a little further than normal, and it's easier to rope off and maintain for the adult beverages that we will have. Other than that, I mean, we're just requesting that we'll be able to do this again and hope raise more money for the Sertoma Club.
Questions for Ms. Ball?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure that Angie and MJ can work together at night.
I know, I know, they start today, yeah. That'd be.
Yeah, when we're finished partying at the library, we're just going to go.
Yeah, they're just going to roll on down.
Yeah, because the libraries know how to party.
The insurance is the same as last year as well for this event, and it will be emailed this week, so y'all will have that.
Any other comments?
Thank you for what you've done since you've been down.
I love doing it. I love it. I just hope, I wish it was bigger this year, and we're going to have some fun.
Okay.
So.
We approve the request, subject to the receiving of the insurance.
Second, got a motion, the second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Item number six, public hearing. Public hearing has been scheduled to consider an economic development incentive agreement with Kaiser Roth Incorporated. At this time, we recognize Mr. Olin.
Mayor, city was approached through Mac Williams with a request from Kaiser Roth in terms of an economic incentive agreement for expansion. We worked with Kaiser Roth back in 2004, Todd, or '05, I believe, with an expansion, and it's been very successful. Todd Howard is CFO, is here tonight to make the presentation to council, and then following that, we'll certainly follow through with what the incentive clause would be and how it follows our policy. Todd?
Welcome, Mr. Howard.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the time. Thanks for allowing me to speak. Thanks for your consideration of the incentive proposal. Thanks for your, Kaiser Roth appreciates the support that the community's provided in the past and hopefully in the future. Kaiser Roth is, well, for those that are not familiar, Kaiser Roth, we're a sock manufacturer primarily here in the United States and primarily in North Carolina. We're only in the United States, but primarily in North Carolina. We are committed to a made-in-the-U.S.A. operation. We, while our competition over the years have taken manufacturing and jobs overseas to countries like China and other Asian countries, we have continued to invest in the United States and support jobs in the United States, and that remains a core value of ours and one that we're proud of, and we remain committed to today and for the future. So, we have an opportunity in front of us that will allow us to, if we can pull it off, allow us to increase our production capacity at the Burlington facility by about 12, well, at least really 12 million pairs of socks per year, which represents a 30% increase in the, over the current capacity in the facility, so it's a pretty good sizable increase. And it's, I want to note that that's volume that is, or manufacturing production that is currently overseas. I don't know what country, I just know it's not in the country, and I'll explain that further. And it's not production that we do overseas, it's production that a foreign company would be doing overseas. I'll talk more about that in a moment. In the near term, this would mean, require a capital investment by Kaiser Roth of approximately $18 million, and we would create at least, and I stress "at least" because I do expect that the number will be larger than this, but we want to sign up for a minimum of 50 full-time jobs at Kaiser Roth and in particular at Burlington. Equally as important and in line with our made-in-the-U.S.A. objective, this project would allow us to lay, I guess, a larger foundation for future growth and future, you know, future investment and also future job growth, again, I stress here in the USA. This opportunity is not one that's easy. As I stated, it's, and here's where I expand on the comment I made earlier, it's, the idea is a made-in-the-U.S.A. initiative where we would partner with some retailers, and we would all get behind a made-in-the-U.S.A. initiative, and we would supply a sock that is 100% made in the USA, at a, which would be a better quality sock, and here's the challenging part, at a better price than what our foreign competitors are offering. So, that's important to me because the consumers, consumers in the United States, if you ask them if they prefer to buy American, they say yes, but when they go out to retail, if the prices, if they see a made-in-the-U.S.A. product and they see a China-sourced product, if the China-sourced product is less than the American-made, they, you know, nine out of 10 times, they'll go ahead and buy the foreign product because they're price-driven. Unfortunately, that's reality. So, because of that, it's a very challenging project to pull off financially. So, we have taken the approach that we want to reach out to all of our partners, that we can involve in a collaborative effort to try to make such a project economically, marginally economically viable. Those partners are, for example, raw material suppliers, packaging suppliers, utility providers, the retailers themselves, I'm having conversations with contractors about possibilities of how we might do an expansion at a better price than what they're normally accustomed to, and even, we are, as I said before, willing to accept, well, will have to accept, a very tighter margin on any kind of volume that we, that we're able to achieve under this One of those partners, of course, is the government, and that's why we're here, that's why I'm here today. So, we, Kaiser Roth and I are asking that we can count on the city of Burlington to be one of those partners and to help us, to be part of the collaborative effort to enable us to pull a project like this off and make it viable. You know, we are competing globally, and by "we," I do mean, I don't mean Kaiser Roth, I mean all of us, all of us together, and I think that going forward, we as a, as a community and even as a country, we need to, if we can take this collaborative approach and compete better, then we can be more successful and bring manufacturing and jobs back into the USA. So, that's what our goal is, which is, again, consistent with who we are and what we're proud of and what our commitment is to be here in the US and continue to produce in the United States. So, having said that, I ask that you vote in favor of the incentive proposal that has been put forth, and thank you again for your time, and happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Howard?
One question, mayor. What's the timetable, Mr. Howard?
We've got a few more pieces that we're pulling together, but if it comes together, then we would start soon, in the fourth, likely in the fourth quarter of this year, and it would, we would be complete, it would take 12 to, it always takes longer than we think it's going to take, so, you know, let's say one and a half, two years to be, to where we're fully up with additional volume.
And the 50 jobs that you mentioned will be, those will be in place, you know, by the end of, at the end of construction, you will hire these people?
I expect that no later than the end of 2014, although the way we're asking to structure the agreement is that we have until the end of 2015 to reach that goal. But I expect to reach the goal, you know, I don't want to sign up for this, but I honestly think that we'll blow past that goal by the end of 2014 and without a doubt sometime during 2015.
That's all I have, mayor.
And the $18 million of investment, that's in, is that mostly personal property, equipment inside the plant, or is that?
It is. It is. Yeah, it's about, it's about, yeah, about 11, between 11 and 12 million in personal property, and, well, actually closer to 12 million in personal property and then the balance would be in machinery and equipment.
Really, the 12 million would be real property for us?
That's what I mean. I'm sorry, that's what I meant. I'm sorry, yeah, real property.
All right.
Right, and the personal property would be the balance, personal property being machines and equipment, right?
You know, Mr. Howard, I heard you speak about made-in-the-U.S.A. and bringing the jobs back to the USA, but, and I heard you speak in reference to the 50 jobs, but can you tell us what your company's going to offer Alamance County slash the city of Burlington? Because we're having to make a decision about an investment in tax dollars for your company. So, tell me, tell me what's going to happen to the city of Burlington, Alamance County in reference to this investment that we're considering?
Well, you mean how you're going to benefit? Well, I think we all benefit. I mean, you know, that's really kind of feeds into my idea of a collaborative approach, and so really, everybody benefits, the suppliers.
When you say suppliers, and you spoke in reference to contractors and retailers, I'm assuming what you mean by that, all of that is local?
Well, retailers are national, but, yeah, the balance of, yeah, all the suppliers would be, well, when I say local, let's say, for example, we buy our yarn from, I can throw a few names out, Unify, or, I mean, by local, not necessarily in Burlington, but, you know, most likely in North Carolina and absolutely within the US.
I think if, with adding 50 jobs over the next 24 months, once, if this is approved or not, you know, it's 50 people going back to work that's not working now. They're putting back into the economy instead of drawing out of the economy, so that's going to be a big plus for the city of Burlington as well, is getting that, and plus, 50 plus, plus maybe, as you can to do a little bit more here in the city of Burlington.
Sure.
So, just getting to put 50 people back to work, you know, I know we're going to get some complaints about whether, you know, you're just minimum wage jobs, but that's the jobs that people don't have, that should be able to go out and apply, and I think we have enough qualified people here to fill these jobs and then more. So, I thank you for picking Burlington to expand here.
Sure, thank you.
A little more than minimum wage jobs. I want to tell you, $10.40 an hour today.
Yeah, well, there's a, it's a range. There are some that are higher, but I, you know, I like to lowball my numbers, so, because that's, I'm the financial guy, you know, so I want to make sure I hit them. But, yeah, I mean, they're lower paid, and that's, you know, it's the nature of the industry, unfortunately, but, you know, I think a longer-term benefit that we can all realize is that if we can bring manufacturing and bring jobs back into the United States and feed the economy and feed growth, and then our economy is internally turning and organically growing, then ultimately, job, you know, demand for jobs will improve and people overall will benefit everywhere. So, I mean, it's, I know it's just a, it's just a small step in that direction, but somebody's got to, somebody's got to take it, you know, and so that's.
Any other questions for Mr. Howard? Harold, is there anything you would like to add to this conversation before we go to the public hearing in reference to how our investment plays out?
Mr. Bateman was involved in this agreement. Our approach is a little different than maybe the county's in the sense that ours is based on investment in terms of the incentive. We, this proposal here is 2% of the taxable, new taxable income on investment, so it's estimated 18 million. If it goes over that, of course, we more if it's less that, it's based on that, not a set figure. Second thing, it was interesting, we had some discussions last week about branding in the community, and we got a couple of calls from business journals. Interesting part, and I would think this is true, Mr. Howard, this construction will be on the I-85, I-40 quarter, I believe that's where you plan on expanding, which has a really intangible impact on the community. People like to see growth. That is, about 100,000 cars a day travels out there. That's something that I think can help the entire community. Mr. Butler, who could be here tonight, always tells me, anytime you see crane in action, cranes working means progress. So, this would be new construction along with their existing building, I understand. Todd, how many square feet do you have on the roof out there now? Big building.
Yeah, a lot. I don't, honestly, Harold, I'm sorry, I don't know the square footage.
It's a large building.
Let's see, actually, we're talking about- Let's see, actually, we're, we're, we're talking about adding about 180,000 square feet, and so, that, just based on my visual, that would suggest that we've got probably close to, I'd say between 700 and 800,000 square feet.
And their last expansion in Macinspecto, this, it was really well done, very clean equipment and a really nice facility out there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, we'll start on this side, anyone that would like to speak on this side, come forward. Could you come forward, if you'd state your name and address for the record?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman?
I'm John Brooks, I live Saint Sperry Drive in Burlington. I really didn't intend to speak, and it just occurred to me to ask a question. Well, first of all, is Kaiser Roth in the city limits of Burlington? I saw something on the internet today that seemed to question that, does anybody know for sure?
Yes.
It is. Again, I would say to Kaiser Roth, you know, for the size corporation they are, and we're talking, what, $300,000, $316,000, you know, the, the owner of the corporation, whether it's private or, and I don't honestly know, I apologize that, I don't know if it's a public company or a private company, but that amount of money won't even be visible to, to the owners of the company. And I've been in business in Burlington, I don't have business here, I'm a traveling manufacturers rep, and I'm in manufacturing, probably making metal parts and plastic parts that go into textile equipment and other stuff. For, I've been doing this in Burlington since, well, for 35 years. All the companies I represent are US companies, they're all privately owned, and I, I can't honestly answer the question, you know, whether they've sought and received any public assistance from their local cities, maybe they have. The older I get and watch what's happening in our country, I guess I'd just like to say that I, I wish that government and business would really not be business partners. And, and in my own personal business, I haven't got any special consideration, you know, if, if you guys would agree tonight to help me add another sales guy, I would promise you that I would base him in Burlington, he might graduate from Elon or ACC or just be a high school graduate. And, you know, he would pay some taxes here, not nearly as much as Kaiser Roth does, but over 36 years, the sales that we've done, and it's usually been just me and one partner, either in Atlanta or in Columbia, South Carolina, we've created, or we've generated pretty close to $100 million in sales to the companies. And we used to rule of thumb, use the rule of thumb that $100,000 in sales would be what one employee could generate. Well, that's 1,000 jobs, they're not in Burlington, but, you know, they're in the United States. So, I would just question the whole concept of government, whether it's our government or the federal government, we've all heard the stories about the federal government, particularly in the green industries and alternative energy businesses, just throwing billions of dollars away. And I'm not suggesting this, that's what we're doing if we do what, what's on the table now. I respect their goal, I wish they could pay more, but I understand that because I'm in the business too, and it's, it's, it's really tough to compete with India, China, and the rest. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
My name is Steve Carter, live in Burlington, 3312 Doral Court. And I'm, I've looked at this situation from a financial perspective, and I'm not sure that it really hurts us or really helps us that much. Sure, it's going to raise money, it's going to bring in tax revenue. The issue to me is, the money that we're contributing here, it's a philosophical issue to me. Government involved in business, being asked to contribute money, which when you look at 360,000, which is what was approved last night at the city, at the county commission meeting, in an $18 million transaction, as a banker, I mean, that didn't even calculate, usually you don't even run, round the numbers down that far sometimes, so, it just really bothers me that the government, that government is constantly being brought in to put taxpayer money into helping businesses. Businesses, if they can't do the job on their own, they need to, they need to get out of the business they're in and find something else to do. If they can do it, explain how they're going to do it and make it work and bring in investors, that's the way this country's worked for over 200 years. Why we're taking the time, it's got to stop someplace, it may not stop in Burlington, it may not stop in Alaman's County, but at some point, we've got to take a stand and say, government, taxpayers can't keep contributing money. Taxpayers are pressed as hard as they can be now. Burlington taxpayers are being pushed, are being pushed at the state level, the county level, and the national level. And every time somebody asks for money, it's hitting the taxpayers. I don't have a problem with Kaiser Roth at all, not a single problem. I, I don't know of any reason why we shouldn't be happy to have them as a, as a community citizen, but I have a problem asking for taxpayer dollars to go to, to go to a private project. It should be able to stand on its own, and the amount of money, if that, if that money's going to break the deal, it really, it really blows my mind, and I'd, they'd spend 800, $18 million on a transaction that $360,000 makes or breaks from the county or $360,000 from the city, makes it or breaks it. Now, thank you for your time, appreciate you listening, I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Mayor, Councilmen, my name is Rick White, and I do live in Burlington also, and in your consideration to incentive for Kaiser Roth, I just, I just wish you were, going forward, look at more ways and innovative ways to give incentives to companies who want to come into Burlington instead of throwing money at them all the time. And I can appreciate Kaiser Roth and any business who want to start up in Burlington, but to throw money at them every time they want to do something, you know, it's a little bit, seem like the easy and simpler way out, and like there will be more innovative ways that we could excite companies to come into Burlington to expand and grow. And also, I know our company over in Glen Raven, last year, I think they expanded their organization, but I don't think they came to the city for any money, they were able to sustain on theirself. So, only thing I'm saying or asking, just consider when you're spending taxpayer's dollars, to look at more innovative ways and think out of the box ways to try to bring industry into Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from this side that would like to speak? I have a note here that would.
Sir, what's your name?
Rick White. I have a note here for public comments from Mr. Alfonso, needs to speak during the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I actually would go the other way, I think this is a very good thing for the county.
Name, address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Alex Alfonso, I live at 810 High Street here in Burlington, I live and work in Burlington as well. I actually think this is a very good thing for the county, for the company, and for the people who would get those 50 jobs here in Burlington. But, and I think that the city should consider an even further investment in public transportation to make sure that the people who really need those jobs, the ones that maybe are not working, the ones that maybe don't have reliable transportation to this company that is providing these jobs, have a way of getting those jobs. Not only that, but I think it's going to spread money around. The same people that would take that bus to, to work would also maybe stop, you know, on the way there in downtown or whatnot, because I've seen the plan for public transportation here, I know it calls for several loops in and out of downtown to places like Elon, ACC, and I'm sure Kaiser Roth could be included in those routes. So, I see as it's spreading around money in everyone's pocket, and since the city is going to see more money from this, and, you know, consumers are going to see more money from this, I think you all should consider putting more money into the symbiotic relationship that public transportation might have with this company. Mr. Fawcett, yeah, I know on the city council's website or the Burlington City website, you, you say you focus on public transportation or bringing a mass transit system here to Burlington. When I go to these work sessions where public transportation is on the agenda, you know, I, I see an ambiguity in you all, so just, you know, let's get an up and down vote, but I'd like to see you champion it more and say, you know, this is something that we need to get done, this is something that we will get done, and I will vote yes for it if it comes before me.
Mr. Fawcett, pesters the devil out of all of us about it, I think he's.
Well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that, I'd see, I'd like to see that pestering in public, even if it would give you a hard time, Mr. Huffman. Mr. Mayor, you are on a National Transportation Board that informs the federal government on transportation funding, I think it would be a great thing for you to come back to that board with a success story in your own city. I think all these things are, are, are really great thing for Burlington, and if we're going to keep growing, and, and, and as Mr. Owen says, that growth is, is a, a good thing for everyone, this is something that should really go along with any other incentives packages that you're giving. I saw the council move with great speed and alacrity to get this public hearing done to, to consider the incentive for Kaiser Roth. What public transportation would cost here in Burlington will never be cheaper than it is right now. I think $400,000 if you don't, if you don't instill a vehicle registration tax for vehicles here in Burlington, which would cut it to about $200,000, and from what I understand, those numbers are on the high side, so it might be even less than that, considering the gas prices or whatnot. So, I would like to see you all move with the same speed to get public transportation done, because here in Burlington, you've been dragging this debate on for, going on, I think maybe five, six years, I haven't been there that long, but, but if I check my history, I think it might be that long. And, and I know.
30 seconds.
And I know I would definitely have benefited from it as a newcomer here to the city. So, thank you very much, and I hope you will consider that when you're considering the incentives for this company.
Thank you, sir. I might have misspoken in reference to your public comment period, I, I really thought it was about the incentives, not public transportation.
It was.
So, I apologize.
No, 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 no problem, it was.
Okay, because I'm just reading off the sheet, so I apologize to you.
Yes, sir.
All right, anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
Will we close the public hearing?
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Harold, I still want to hear a little bit more about the investment that we make, investment in reference to the return on the dollar and that, that conversation.
Ours is a percentage on new taxable investments, it's projected to be $18 million and proposal calls for 2% investment to be paid back over a four-year period of time, which I believe still gives us a positive tax flow for the first four years. Then obviously after the fourth year, all the new taxable money goes into general fund While I haven't talked to Mr. Howard about this, most of our investment into textiles also has a positive impact on our water and sewer operations in terms of usage.
What did you say, the first four years, what happens?
It's a, the actual investment, as soon as the CO is given, that's when they're ready to move in, that's when the first payment is made back to the company, and following that's on an annual basis to pay the incentive off over a four-year period of time. And it should be, if I remember correctly, a small positive tax flow, positive, for those four years and after that.
For the first four years, there's still a positive flow?
First four years.
So, you mean, we're making money from the word go, period?
Yes.
All right, and then after the first four years, it's really a larger profit?
Well, it's the entire thing then.
Okay.
A new investment.
New investment.
A new rights, okay.
That's really important, this is based on new investment that's set forth by when the county goes in and actually makes the determination of the tax value of, of the project itself.
Any other comments from council or questions, Mr. Owen?
That was one of the reasons, Mr. Mayor, that I asked the question about how much of this was going into bricks and mortar as opposed to personal property, because if it goes out of business, the bricks and mortar are still there, so that's still adds to the tax base, so even down the line, that portion of it, even if the equipment's moved out of the facility, you've still got an increased tax base there. Let me, if, if, let me, let me address Mr. Brooks and Mr. Carter in particular, I, I just want to comment about a few things that, what you've said. I, I wish it was not, I wish the shape of the field was not as it is. I wish that the state legislature would come in, they've done so much to restrict cities over the last two sessions, I wish they'd come in and say, no, cities you cannot, counties you cannot give incentives. It would make our job a lot easier, it really would, and they have that ability to do that. But, that's not the shape of the field that we're dealing with. Shape of the field is, is it's wide open. And look, you have to look at it from the, from the point of Mr. Howard here, we ran into this even with the likes of LabCorp, as big an organization as they are, and as good a corporate citizen as they are. The board of directors of those corporations, do they need these incentives that we have? No. Are they truly incentives? No, actually, Mr. Howard's correct, you're really in somewhat of a partnership arrangement, okay, to try to incubate this sort of development and get it here. If, if we were to turn around and take the position, we're just not going to participate in this sort of thing, Mac Williams would tell you right now, we would be eliminated right up front, because the position of corporate America now, and those folks that sit on the boards of directors, and the owners, and the CFOs of corporations like that now, they actually feel that it is part of their fiduciary responsibility to their shareholders, that they have to go and, and ask for incentives from local governments, and from the state, and from the counties. So, that, from their standpoint, they're representing their shareholders when they come and ask for incentives. We sit here from the standpoint of cities, Mr. White, you said something about try non-monetary incentives. You have to understand, this is a Dillon's Rule state, we cannot do anything that the state legislature doesn't allow us to do, doesn't say that we can do, we're pretty much restricted as to what we can do as far as incentives are concerned. So, it's not like we're necessarily our own, our own masters in this situation, we're using the tools that we have available to us. Could we unilaterally just turn around and take that position that we're not going to participate? We could. Would we be getting any industry coming in here? We might, still would, but as a practical matter, we would certainly be eliminated up front, I think Mr. Williams would tell you this, I've sat through enough of your seminars now to know that we would certainly be eliminated right up front if we were to take that sort of position as a board. And do understand this, we recognize that these incentives, we're not giving the money away, basically, we're, I'd say, incubating and lowering the taxes up front for the first four years here, and after that point in time, the, the full tax, taxes are received. Is it fair, Mr. Brooks, is it fair to those folks that are already in business? Certainly doesn't seem like it. Yeah, where, I lost you, there you go, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it. But that's the shape of the field now, okay? And, and you know, you, right now, you go, like, go to a football game and you watch them, watch the kids play out there, and it's a rectangle field, and they develop plays to fit that field. If they change the field to a round field, they develop different plays. And. And that's what we're dealing with, the shape of the field as it is, and we've got to play by the rules of the day. The legislature could change it all for us overnight if they chose to. They've chosen not to do that. So I think what we're doing here is looking out for the citizens of our town, in the sense that we certainly want to be in the game, as far as getting jobs to not just Burlington, but all of Alamance County. Along those lines, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the...
Could I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead, you're me. Absolutely. If you'd just come forward.
Some people think of me as argumentative. I don't really need to be.
Just three minutes, son.
I'm gonna make it shorter. David, I appreciate that. I've been, I've heard from Mac, since Mac has been here, what, ten years, Mac, or? I've heard from Sonny before that, the same story. I believe that local government is what we need to be all about, and we're gonna have to start taking some stands and tell the state, we've got representatives and senators from here, and we need to let them know, we don't like the state of North Carolina bossing us around. You know, if I had, if I could be king for a day, I would eliminate the State Department of Education, totally. I would eliminate the Federal Department of Education, totally. All right, that's thinking way too big. On the local level, I think it would show a lot of courage for us to be the city that says to the other thousands of cities in North Carolina, hundreds of counties, okay, we're not gonna do it. And just say, we do like Kaiser Roth. In terms of what Mr. White said, this town is very attractive to people. I know people, you guys have met people now, that are here from California, Washington State, Michigan, New York State. You guys have done a good job, Harold's done a good job, this city's done a great job. We've got resources here that are incredible. This is an attractive place to live. If some corporation doesn't want their people to live here, you know, hey, there's other places they can go. We will get our share of the business, we really will. LabCorp's a good example. They came from La Jolla, California. I'm sure cost had a lot to do with that. But those people like it here, the ones that transplant it. So, you know, we got, David, we gotta start somewhere, and we could be the folks that do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Have we had a motion?
Before we vote.
Sure.
Finish that, Mr. Mayor. Let me say a few things here.
I constantly get hit by people saying that the city of Burlington and the county of Alamance is not business-friendly. But I hope our citizens will understand that when we have an opportunity to have new businesses to come in, it's because, once they get here, and if there's an incentive given, or an incentive not given, then this sort of, you have to understand, it keeps your tax level low as well. We haven't raised taxes in a while, okay? But that's new income coming into the city that helps provide that lower tax. So I just want everybody to be aware that that's part of, part of new companies coming in. If we didn't do some of these incentives, then we wouldn't get any jobs here. So I mean, we just, you gotta be able to accept growth, and that's my whole thing. We've gotta have growth to keep everything on an even keel, especially our taxes. So I just ask the citizens, will you please look at all the dimensions of those things when we do give incentives? I'm against incentives, but it's nature of the beast, what we have to go against right now, so.
I'm ready to vote, Mr. Mayor. Second. Second, Mr. Mayor.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Item number seven on the agenda. Public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application to rezone from R-15 Residential District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of Unified Business Development and to CO&amp;I, Conditional Office and Institutional District, for uses allowed in O&amp;I Office and Institutional Districts. The property is located on the east side of University Drive, the west side of Huffman Lane, approximately five hundred feet from the South Church Street, as shown in Alamance County Tax Map 3-27, Lot 75, 76, and 78, portion of Lot 16. This is on appeal. Valid petition has been received. This time, I recognize Ms. Amy Nelson. Ms. Nelson, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Good evening. This is a request for a public hearing on a rezoning that is on appeal. It was affirmed by staff, recommended, and the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed it for a while and chose to deny it. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lawson Brown.
Brown, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, it's my pleasure to be here tonight representing White Cliff Investments. We have a few issues that we're working with, with the neighbors. We respectfully request that this matter be set over until September 17th for the full public hearing, at which time I think all those issues can be addressed. So that's what we would like to do this evening. And I've tried to let everyone know that was potentially involved with this, that this is exactly what we were doing.
Any comments from council?
Ms. Brown, can you do that on October 15th?
October 15th?
You do that on October 15th.
I think so, Mr. Huffman. Our preferred date is September 17th, but if that presents a problem, October 15th would be fine.
Any, your heart, your heart?
Twenty-first of October here.
Please, the lead, I mean, it's in October, Ms. Ward.
October 1st and October 15th.
You can put that into motion.
Fifteenth. October 15th.
September 15th.
October 15th.
September 17th and October 1st for October 15th.
Move, we set the date for October 15th.
Got a motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. October 15th.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Number eight on the agenda, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider the ARMNC Property Volunteer Annexation to be effective August 20th, 2013, at 11:59 PM. This time, we'd recognize Mr. Schaffner. Welcome, Mr. Schaffner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Mayor Wall stated, you've got four public hearings before you tonight on four separate voluntary annexations. And if you please, I'll just quickly give you a brief description of each one, and then move forward with each individual public hearing.
Okay.
And if you have any questions on the particulars of the property, I'd be happy to answer those questions as well. The first one is a approximately nine-and-a-half acre tract out at the hospital. This is basically a doughnut hole that was not eligible to be annexed with the city-initiated annexation a few years ago. Due to the hospital conducting a rezoning earlier in the year, one of the conditions was that they would voluntarily bring this parcel into the city of Burlington. And if you have no questions, I'll move on to the next parcel.
Any questions for Mr. Schaffner on this, number eight?
Let's just handle them one at a time, Mr. Mayor, if they're up one at a time.
Sure.
All right, any questions for Mr. Schaffner? This is a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Move to close the public hearing.
All right.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose.
Move to approve the annexation.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you. Number nine, public hearing has been scheduled to consider the Sheetz Distribution Center voluntary annexation to be effective August 20th, 2013, at 11:59 PM. This time, we'd recognize Mr. Schaffner. Mr. Schaffner.
Your second parcel before you tonight is the Sheetz Distribution Center parcel, of course. This is a satellite annexation, which has to meet special statutory requirements, and this parcel does indeed do that. This parcel is approximately forty-four and a half acres, and we've received voluntary annexation petition for that, for the purposes of connecting to utilities.
Any questions for Mr. Schaffner?
Went out there today, and they're moving dirt. There's some dirt movement going on out there.
Any questions for Mr. Schaffner? This is a public hearing. Any question, I mean, anyone that'd like to speak on this side? Anyone on this side?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose.
We adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Item number 10, public hearing has been scheduled to consider the Quality Equipment Voluntary Annexation to be effective August 20th, 2013, 11:59 PM. Mr. Schaffner.
Yes, Mayor Wall. This parcel before you is the quality equipment site. They're relocating from, off of Maple Avenue, to the site off of Anthony and White's Kennel Road. It's approximately six acres, and they have also submitted voluntary petition for utility connection purposes.
Any questions for Mr. Schaffner? I remind you, this is a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose.
We adopt the ordinance.
Second. Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you. Item number 11 on the agenda, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider the Melmark Subdivision Voluntary Annexation to be effective August 20th, 2013, at 11:59 PM. Mr. Schaffner.
Yes, sir. This is an approximately seventeen-acre site, which will one day be a residential, single-family residential subdivision, located off of Apple Street, is contiguous to the city, and we've received voluntary petition for, again, the purposes of connecting to water and sewer.
Questions for Mr. Schaffner?
How about the water line run down there? Just go down to the top of the hill on Grand Oldale.
This one is actually along Apple Street. It goes right in front of the property.
Yeah, and it goes down.
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Any other? Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose.
We adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you, Mr. Schaffner.
Thank you.
Public hearing has been scheduled to consider amending the city of Burlington zoning ordinance text, section 32-10-A, accessory buildings. Recognized at this time, it's Amy Nelson. Welcome, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, sir. This is just kind of a housekeeping issue with some of the temporary storage units. It lays out size restrictions, the amount of time they can be on a site, the number of units you can have, the location of the units, some prohibitions. And if you have any questions, I can answer them, I can read over the document.
Questions for Ms. Nelson?
Mayor, this came as a request of several neighbors. As this business has become more and more prominent, especially with renovations, which we understand, but we began to have some issues where these units were being moved in where it wasn't renovation. So we looked at the ordinance and cleaned it up a little bit. I think it would make it much more appropriate.
These things have become permanent fixtures in the yards.
They were, yes, in some cases. And this is pretty standard language across the state.
What's the time for?
Over a man.
Sixty days.
Any other questions for Ms. Nelson?
Move to approve the...
We have a public hearing as well. Anyone that'd like to speak on this topic? Anyone on this side?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Got a second. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Brings this public comment, period. We had one that's taken care of. Any others? Brings us to city council comments. Reminder, city offices will be closed on Monday, September 2nd, 2013, for Labor Day. Also, reminder, neighborhood meetings start on September 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th. That's each Thursday in September. Also, our next meeting will be September 3rd. The work session will be September 16th. Any other comments from council? Not entertain a motion, adjourn.
Fresh meat. Here's the legislative.